... made available to the public through auto recording, which will be used to ensure accurate recording of proceedings produced in the minutes of the meeting. All comments made in an open session will be recorded. Also read the following of the board members participating remotely. Board members. Fraser Townley.
Aye.
Louis Carpenter.
Aye.
John Grunia and Town Council Amy Castle. As participating remotely via accordance with requirements of forty C M R twenty nine ten via speak phone due to personal illness, emergency, geographic distance, personal disabilities, military service, all voting terms, meeting will be made via roll call. Turn this off. Sorry. Just to end the meeting.
Do you have any minutes or anything? Nothing?
Yeah.
You could do all that while you're waiting.
Yeah.
Give you something to do.
It's a good idea. I just got drunk, it's falling off. January minutes, okay, meeting minutes, I'll go through that. All right, zoning board appeals town of Pembroke, meeting minutes, January twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, location, blah, blah, blah. Opening meeting, Mr. McGrail chaired.
Yeah, so Louis and I were at the meeting.
Okay, do you guys want to do it?
No, I'm just, do we need to read these out?
No, no, you just need to approve them.
I think, so shall we make a motion to?
Motion approved.
So I've motioned it, you've seconded it?
I second it. So that's good.
Shall we vote?
I.
I.
Easy.
Easy, easy.
I didn't have anything else.
No, I understand.
Okay.
So shall we make a motion to?
Resess.
Close to recess until?
Motion to recess. I'll give you a second.
Second.
Aye.
Until seven thirty?
Yeah, until seven thirty, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Village, the Conpartment, forty B Affordable Housing Project, the application of Bristol Brothers Development Corp., property seven and fifteen Mattakesett Street, last continued from January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. My name is Ted Casper, I'm the chairman of the board, Attorney Questles here, this town council, the other members could just identify themselves.
John Grunia. Louis Carpenter.
Fraser Townley.
So John and Louis are here, these voting members, and Fraser's observing. So we continue from January twenty-second. I'll turn it over to Town.
Great, thank you very much. Jeff Toccio here with the applicant, Jim Bristol. It's with me Josh Green from Crocker Design, Tom Godfrey, our development consultant is here as well. Coming in, taking a look, we reviewed the Crocker Design responses that this caller put together, and it looks as though we've got everything put together. We received a draft permit decision from council today, we've had an opportunity to go through that today, and we just have some comments if you'd like to engage in some discussion, just a couple of little tweaks and questions going forth, but otherwise appears to all be within, you know, the range of, you know, what gets us there. There's some questions with respect to the waivers, we can either discuss some of those this evening, or we can go forth if you folks would be comfortable closing, and then having, we've got a list of those, I can't say that I have it printed out this evening, but if you want, I can orally just go through those as well, the reason for them. The sign, many of them have to do with the signage, and when we asked for the waivers, we anticipated that we would have signage, we do not have those, so query whether they're, you know, something that you folks would be comfortable granting or not, you know, but we just weren't in a position to be able to put all of those together.
Okay. I guess we could go through the decision, Amy, do you have a preference?
No, do you want me to fly through it?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Yep, that's no problem.
And if we have some questions or corrections, can I just interrupt you on them, is that the best way?
That's fine.
Great, thank you.
So this is my standard decision for forty B, the layout of it. So we go through the procedural history, the applicant submitted the application on February sixth of two thousand twenty-three, and then during the public hearing process, it was modified to add the hundred and thirty-two seat tavern restaurant. It's located in the Center Protection District, the residential A, it's currently improved, as you know, with the funeral home, and a detached single-story garage, and then I put where it's located in that, it is located near Town Hall and the Police Department, all those things. The dates that the hearing was, that the hearing was scheduled for, whether testimony was taken or not, and then we have to fill in the date that it was closed on. The submittals are all with the, in the office, waivers are on exhibit A, the applicant provided plans, and who the applicant was represented by. I, do I have, I have the engineer is Gabe Crocker, is it Josh Green? Do you want to change that?
Engineer record should be Gabe Crocker.
Okay, great. The board utilized Merrill, the board, obviously since it's a public hearing, opened it up to a butters and interested parties, the board members that have been, that are going to sit on this, and then, oh, the number nine is leftover from a previous decision, so take that out. Governing law is forty B, and then I go through the, on paragraph eleven, those are the standard safe harbors, Pembroke has not reached safe harbor, and this decision has to balance the regional need for low and moderate income versus local, local needs, and then jurisdictional findings that the town has not met their statutory minimum, and the town has not received, or the town is not eligible for the GLAM, and so at the time that this, actually, so yeah, oh, that's what, that's what it, so on D, it says that at the time of the application for the conference of permit was filed, the town did not qualify for any of the safe harbors. I, I did have to, it says however, the town has a proven history of advancing affordable housing, most specifically the town of Pembroke has been above eight percent on the subsidizing housing inventory since at least two thousand sixteen. Your inventory changed because of the two thousand twenty census, so at one point you guys were close to like nine point eight, but you're now down to eight, but to be safe, I just put that you're, you've been above eight since two thousand sixteen. And then mass housing determined, they issued a project eligibility, and that twenty-five percent, so this is again from a leftover one, at least twenty-five percent of the sixty-six units, it should say, will be available to households earning below eighty percent. The applicant received a project eligibility letter, and then A, B, and C goes through what they have to prove to get their project eligibility letter, and then the factual findings start on page five.
Super quick, do you want the address or the, gotcha, the Midway address is?
Oh, sorry, where is that?
That's okay, no problem, it's on A.
Sure.
I think it should just be one ninety Old Derby Street, suite three-one-one.
And I have that in the beginning?
Yeah.
Okay, that's the same one that I have in the beginning, right? On the, on page two at the very top, one ninety Old Derby Street, suite three-eleven?
Perfect.
Okay, I'll change that. The factual findings, the site, where the site's located again, it's where, it's currently improved, and then eighteen, the project proposes the construction of three multifamily buildings, sixty-six age-restricted units and a tavern, the hundred and four surface parking spaces and twenty-two garage spaces, a stormwater management system, shared subsurface septic design for the residential units and a septic system to support the tavern and associated utility infrastructure. Access is going to be provided by using the two driveway entrances, and then the stormwater management system, a little bit, a little description of that, walkways, and then the applicant provided a letter from mass housing dated November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three indicating the notice of project change which allowed for the tavern, that mass housing has confirmed that it meets the definition of ancillary use, so therefore the board has determined the project as conditioned is consistent with local needs. The applicant submitted a traffic report, so this is number twenty-one, it was dated February sixteenth and updated October second, and it indicates that the site, access to the site will be via two full-size, or full, via two full access egress driveways, the westerly of which will be located opposite Pembroke Center Plaza, adequate sight lines, and then it says that with increases expected in the range of forty-five to forty-eight additional trips every one to one and a half minutes during peak hours, is that correct?
So the other edition said forty-five total per hour, whereas the old edition said per minute, so that was the only part that was confusing, I want to clear that up.
Okay, so what should it say?
Based on the second edition, I believe it's forty-five total per hour.
Okay.
Not minute.
Not minute, not the right.
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
There's a big difference.
Catch, yeah.
Every car in the town is just on that one street.
At once.
Page five is an hour and a minute, right?
Okay, and then how about the next one, it says traffic increase on center and Mattakesett, west of the site are expected in the range of eleven to twenty-nine additional vehicles, or approximately one additional vehicle every two to five and a half minutes?
Yeah, so all the numbers in this are hourly as opposed to per minute.
Okay. Chappelle Engineering concluded these increases are negligible and well within the daily fluctuation traffic and construction of the apartment units, and tavern is not expected to have an adverse impact on the study area. And then the board's peer review engineer testified that the applicant's revised plan set and stormwater are adequate to show the proposed infiltration systems will work as designed, the board finds the conditions imposed are necessary in order to address local concerns, and the board finds that granting certain waivers is acceptable to address local concerns. And then the decision pursuant, pursuant to the act, the board after convening a public hearing and making findings of facts grants a conference of permit to the applicant for the construction of a multifamily development, and I should probably add and tavern restaurant, subject to the conditions in part four. And then we get into the conditions, so the preamble is, it's really, it's just the law, if they don't abide by the conditions, we have some options. For, so in general, that it's going to consist of not more than sixty-six residential units, not exceeding a hundred and thirty-two bedrooms, with a mix of one and two bedrooms, so all I did was I just, I just multiplied sixty-six times two, but I know there's not going to be a hundred and thirty-two bedrooms, but you haven't given us a breakdown yet. And age-restricted rental units housed in three buildings, three stories each, and then based on the plans, but I actually had, oh no, these are the plans that I had, November, so the December twentieth plans didn't change the building units or anything, right? So building A has eighteen units and six garages, building B has twenty-four units and eight garages, and building C has twenty-four units and eight garages.
Correct.
It's all right?
Correct.
Are they doing, are they doing two-bedroom units?
No, so the plan is all one bedrooms, the way that I read it, it shall not exceed, so I thought we were fine with that.
Okay.
Okay, so my notes have one and two bedrooms.
That's what it was earlier, now it's gone down to ones.
Okay, so I'm going to change that to say, instead of a mix of one and two bedrooms, we'll just say one bedrooms.
I had with one bedroom or a mix of et cetera, so if later on we've got some, you know, demand in the market, it would give us some flexibility, but the plan is for only one bedrooms.
Okay, I think we should only vote on what the plan is.
It changes a lot.
Fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, one bedroom, okay, and so sixty-six bedrooms would be the max. Okay, the, and then we have, we get into the plans, so I just, I listed all the plans, those are called the approved plans, and then the condition that the applicant has to be a limited dividend entity, the affordable unit shall be interspersed evenly throughout the project, and that's as approved by the subsidizing agency during the final approval. Pursuant to the waiver list, the applicant has requested and the board has granted certain waivers, and then, so the wave, we specifically state that only the waivers granted are the waivers, so the extent of the approved plans reflect a waiver not expressly granted, the terms and the conditions of the, of this decision control, not the plans. The project shall comply with all local regulations of the town of Pembroke unless specifically waived herein. The applicant has to copy the board on all correspondence between the applicant and any federal, state, and town official board or commission concerning the conditions, except as otherwise specifically provided herein. When the decision provides for the submission of plans or other documents for approval by the Building Department or other town departments, the Building Department staff or applicable town department head will use reasonable efforts to review and provide a written response within thirty days. For submissions that require assistance from an outside consultant, the thirty days starts once the consultant's fee has been paid. The provisions shall be binding upon successors and assigns, sidewalks, driveways, utilities, drainage, and stormwater systems, all other infrastructure will remain private in perpetuity. Snow storage is going, is, has to be as it's shown on this, on the plans, and shall not be anywhere in the interior roadways or any wetland resource areas, there's none, there's no wetland resource areas now, but I just thought we could keep that in, and then if there's too much snow, it has to be trucked off-site, unless otherwise indicated herein, the board hereby designates Merrill Engineering as the agent to review and approve the final plans for consistency with this decision to monitor construction, that's the, that's the continued peer review. And then if Merrill's not, is not available, after consulting with the board, the Building Department may designate another agent as they see fit. And section B is the affordability, so twenty-five percent of the rental units, which is seventeen units, have to be rented to low or moderate income, at least twenty-five percent of the rental units have to meet the criteria for inclusion on this S H I, which means because their rental will get sixty-six units on the S H I, provided those seventeen units qualify. The applicant has to obtain approval by the subsidizing agency and affirmative fair housing marketing plan prior to the rental of any units, and no later than two weeks prior to submitting the proposed affordable marketing plan, the applicant provides a copy to the Building Department and the Pembroke Affordable Housing Committee for review and comment, but the final terms and conditions are solely determined by the subsidizing agency, that's pursuant to the state. For the submission requirements, so we have this separated into three sections, C one, C two, and C three. C one is everything that they need to do prior to construction or site development activities, that, so they have to do this to the build, they have to submit all this to the Building Department, which is the final architectural plans, landscaping, the final landscaping and lighting plans, they have already submitted those, so I just put that the landscaping and lighting plan shall substantially conform to the submitted plan, the signage plan, or not. Are you doing a, you're doing one later, because you don't have one now?
Correct.
Okay. Final engineering drawings, and then at a minimum, the final plan shall be in accordance with the comments from Merrill Engineering dated December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Final plan shall indicate the bedroom count for each unit, we don't need that anymore because they're all one. So final plan shall indicate a notation as to which units will be the affordable units as approved by the subsidizing agency. The final plans have to be consistent with the final stormwater report also, they have to submit a construction management plan, and then the Building Department and the board shall engage at the applicant's expense upon prior agreement to scope of services, one or more agents to review the plans for consistency with this decision. So what this condition requires is that the applicant submit a check for ten thousand dollars, and then if that goes down to fifteen hundred, if that goes below fifteen hundred, they have to replenish it, and that's a forty-four, that's a chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G account, so anything leftover goes back to the applicant, any interest goes to the applicant, and that's for the third-party reviews that the Building Department may need, and essentially it's for Merrill Engineering to track the project. They have to obtain a NIPD's permit, they have to provide the copy of the SWIP, they have to confirm the volume of the cuts and fills needed, and again, they have, they have a cut and fill plan, so that's easy for them to do, and then they, they have to include the source of the material certified by an LSP that the, that it's clean fill, they have to submit a site-specific safety plan, they have to attend a pre-construction meeting, and they have to provide to the board's peer review engineer and the board's agent for review, information relating to the construction methods for the retaining wall along the easterly property line, in order to ensure that the wall construction can be completed without disturbing the existing stone wall, or a temporary construction license or easement relating to the retaining wall along the eastern property line. C two is prior to the issuance of any building permit, they have to record the decision, they have to submit evidence of final approval from the subsidizing agency, they have to submit a certified copy of the regulatory agreement, they have to submit a sign application, they have to provide the board and the Building Department with approximate location of all utilities, they have to get confirmation that there's enough water flow, they have to obtain a file with the Building Commissioner, a copy of all required federal, state, and local permits, they have to obtain the necessary electrical plumbing and other permits, and they have to comply with other applicable conditions which are in section H later on. And then C three is prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any portion of the project, they have to submit as-built information, provide, they have to certify the as-built, they have to obtain acceptance from the fire department of the fire protection systems, complete the water improvements that are necessary for the project, submit an as-built of the stormwater, and then comply with any conditions in H. And then prior to the issuance of their certificate of occupancy for the last residential building, they have to submit all the as-built plans in electronic form, they have to submit as-built plans, they have to submit all information relating to the rental rules and regulations of the management company that shall address building security, parking, public access, pet policy, staffing, trash removal, smoking policies, snow and ice removal, and snow storage, they have to submit verification that all components of the stormwater system have been inspected, cleaned, and final approval, they have to submit certification of, oh, you guys don't have, or certification, certification of compliance with the terms of this comprehensive permit, and then written approval from the Department of Public Works that the water systems have been installed. For project design and construction.
Amy, one thing on that.
Yep.
The, so what's going to be the timing with the construction, the building, residential and the tavern, are they, is it conditioned on?
We don't have, we don't have a sequence yet, they haven't given us one.
We had an issue in the past where someone built residences and they never built commercial stuff in front.
So what do you, do you guys have a proposed?
Do you have a phasing or?
Somewhat simultaneous. I think we want the ability to do foundation permits, there's some language.
Yeah, so that was coming up, so from our perspective right now, all the as-bills, all this is good, and then we just put a star here, later on, they had to do with issuance of the building permits, having everything in, but we were going to suggest, this is jumping ahead a few sections, that building permits that are after the first decks, you know, be withheld until you had in the paving, et cetera, not the finished paving, but just basically the binder, so that we can go in, dig the holes, you know, get the permit for that, and then be in a position to pave it, et cetera, as everything's backfilled, otherwise, if we pave and then go to, you know, to get the foundation permits, that'll all be kind of go in the wrong direction, we can get there when we get there.
Yeah, that's on the condition that I have a comment for you guys, but I think more of what you're saying is should we put in somewhere that they will not get the issue, they won't get the certificate of occupancy for the third building unless the tavern is constructed?
That's what I was going with before, they get that final, so they, I'm not saying that's what you got to do, but it happened before.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so final, okay, so occupancy, okay, occupancy of final building, final residential building, after construction of tavern. Okay.
I'm sorry, cutting off.
No, no, that's good. And then D one, they have to commit, they have to submit a construction management plan, all construction equipment has to be offloaded on the property, they can't have any, they can't have any parking on Mattakesett or any other public way, they have to implement all necessary controls to ensure that vibration from the construction does not constitute a nuisance or a hazard beyond the property lines. Prior to the issuance of land clearing, they have to conduct an evaluation of the pavement condition along the designated truck route to and from the site on town roads within five hundred feet of the project entrance, and then they do, and then under D five, they do a post-construction evaluation of the road, of the same, of those same roadways.
So if I can interject on those two, we've not done that before on projects, you know, we're to downtown, it's not all new infrastructure, et cetera, have you done that in other projects, or what's the thinking behind that?
Pre-impulse evaluation of roads, to evaluate the roads before construction and after construction.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so it's go in, evaluate before, then evaluate after, et cetera.
See what impact the construction, the town was.
Is the thinking that this equipment's going to damage roads, or is it in a bad condition, or?
It, it could impact it.
Yeah.
Depending on the road you're picking.
Well, it's the last five hundred feet, so it's just kind of downtown, and, all right.
The applicant shall permit upon forty-eight hours' notice, subject to applicable safety standards, that the board and town staff can go on the property to observe the construction process. The applicant has to conform to all local, state, federal laws, and the applicant shall at all times use all reasonable means to minimize inconvenience to residents in the general area, any fill has to be clean fill, it has to be tested prior to being deposited on site by a certified LSP, and site utilities have to be located underground from Mattakesett. Exterior construction activities shall be conducted between the hours of seven AM and six PM Monday through Friday, and eight AM and five PM on Saturdays, that's completely up to you guys, that's just a standard one that I put in, okay. And then the other thing is the holidays, I put in the ten standard holidays, which are New Year's Day, President's Day, Memorial Day, Juneteenth, Fourth of July, Labor Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas. Is that all good with everybody?
Do we, do you know when we do the Memorial Day parade, is it on Memorial Day?
Generally, yes.
It's on the actual day?
Yes. Yeah. No disturbed areas can be left unstabilized longer than sixty days without appropriate stabilization, the applicant is responsible for sweeping, removal of snow, and sanding of the internal driveways, providing access both to residents and emergency vehicles. Construction security fencing shall be utilized until the first occupancy permit is issued. For roadway and traffic safety conditions, access and egress to the project shall be consistent with the approved plans, internal sidewalks with compliant, ADA compliant ramps shall be constructed, the internal roadways. The internal roadways shall be designed and constructed to town construction standards.
May I interrupt there? And it's because I don't know the answer. And perhaps I'll ask if Deb's here, or Josh, difference between town standards and the profiles that we've submitted? These aren't town roads, won't be accepted, et cetera. Is there a distinction, or is there a reason? Just usually, town road standards are much higher than typical construction.
So we can take that out and just put designed and constructed in accordance with the final plans?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appropriate directional and safety signage shall be installed and maintained on the internal roadways, subject to review and approval by the Pembroke Fire Department. Applicants shall maintain the site distance at the entrance by limiting and trimming the vegetation. Any landscaping, signage, or fencing within the site distance triangle shown on the sightline exhibit SL one shall be a maximum of two feet from the street level, or setback sufficiently to not impede the driveway site distances. For police, fire, and medical conditions under F, they have to submit to the Pembroke Fire Department all the approval for a fire apparatus access plan, which shows the fire department satisfaction, there's turning radius. Posted no parking restriction shall be provided on the internal project roadway and areas as requested by the Pembroke Fire Department, with appropriate markings and signs. The applicant shall confirm the layout and location of all fire safety equipment, meaning the hydrants, post-indicator valves, panels with the fire department. And all units shall be outfitted with residential sprinkler systems in accordance with NFPA regulations. And that again, is subject, subject to approval by the fire department. For water, stormwater, and utilities, under G, the applicant shall be responsible for the design and installation of all utilities servicing the project. All water infrastructure shall be installed in conformance with the Town of Pembroke requirements. The service size for the domestic water shall be verified by the Department of Public Works and the Fire Department. And the stormwater management facility shall be constructed as shown on the final plans. So for the completion of the infrastructure, as security for completion of infrastructure shown on the final site plans, including but not limited to roadway, sidewalks, parking, stormwater, lighting, water, and sewer, I guess there's no, I don't know, there would be no, it would be water, no sewer, because it's private sewer. Landscaping and utility, the applicant shall provide security, consistent with provisions of GL Chapter Forty-One, Section Eighty-One U, and subject to the following. No building permits will be issued until the entirety of the internal accessway is shown on the final plans, providing access to the subject buildings have been installed, except for the final course of pavement.
Okay, excuse me, that's, that's where we wanted to see if we could make a distinction for being able to put in the foundations before all of that infrastructure is in. So perhaps no building permits for work above the first floor deck will be issued until and then it continues.
Mm-hmm. I'm fine with that, if you guys.
Oh, yeah. I'm. Thank you.
No certificate of occupancy for a building shall be issued until all infrastructure necessary to serve the building, as approved by the board's peer-review engineer, or the building department has been constructed and installed. And then on C, so because we have four different buildings, three of them are residential, one of them is restaurant, here it says the final infrastructure for the project, including but not limited to the final course of pavement, shall be installed prior to the issuance of the occupancy permits for the final building. So what I'm confused about is if you build, are you going to have people living there when the whole project hasn't been, we don't have a final course of pavement?
I would believe so, yes. Yes.
Okay. So.
And that's just not to eat up the final courses sacrosanct.
So the, okay, so, so the way that this is written is okay then, because it says, the final infrastructure for the project, including but not limited to final course of pavement, shall be installed prior to the issuance of occupancy permits for the final building. So that allows you to do this in phases?
I would think so. I was wondering, how many, the final building, I was wondering if we should make that like the final 11 units, or? Or is everything going to happen at once?
The final building.
Okay.
Yeah, you can't separate, how, you couldn't, you can't separate out units.
Yeah, I guess you're right.
Because it's one building.
Yeah, I get, I get, I get a condo mindset.
No, you can't do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so then that, so then the way that this is written is, is going to be fine with you guys, with your construction. Okay. The board's peer-review engineer shall review the project upon completion of all such final infrastructure, infrastructure above, and notify the Pembroke Building Department that occupancy permits may be issued. Other general conditions, this expires in three years. So where I say H, yeah, okay, so that goes back to the, that goes, H is connected also to C, we just have to remember that. That was just, I'm just talking to myself right now. Sorry. Don't listen. Okay. Other general conditions, so we're on I. So it's three years, this is good for three years. They have to comply with all local regulations, unless specifically waived. It prohibits the parking or storage of any unregistered vehicle on the site, and likewise prohibits the service of any vehicles on the site, except during construction. The applicant shall be responsible for sweeping, removal of snow, the sanding of internal roadways, permitting safe access to residents and emergency vehicles during construction and until, that's not a condominium, and until, during construction and thereafter, is what that should say. And then I'll skip the parking, we'll go to parking spaces shown as herein, have to be generally in the same configuration they are on the approved plans that we are, have approved. The, and then I said that the applicant and/or the management company is required to provide resident and visitor parking stickers to all residents. Landscaping is maintained in perpetuity by the property owner. Dead or diseased planting shall be replaced within six months in accordance with the growing and weather conditions. Final plans indicate each unit, and we don't have to say number of bedrooms. And then rooms not designated on the final plans as a bedroom shall not be converted into a bedroom. So going back to parking, you guys had concerns about the tavern parking with regard to the residential parking. I didn't know if you guys wanted to.
If you're related to the amount of seats versus seat ratio, yeah, what is the etiquette? Was it one?
Yeah, so they have.
One space per four seats?
Yes.
I think it is.
I think it is.
Question the seats, seat count, that's all.
So.
I'd have to go back.
It's, it's 1.4 parking spaces per bedroom, and then.
For the restaurant, I think it's one or four.
For the restaurant, it's one space to 2.2 seats.
How is it?
That's what my notes have. Is that what's required?
No, I thought it was one to four, maybe.
Yeah, it's one to four, there was an ex, yeah.
So is it required to be one, one space to 2.2 seats, or something?
One parking, or four spaces.
That's code?
Yes.
So 132 divided by four is 33?
But right now, it's under proposed in the plan, we have 93 spaces for the restaurant, so 33 for tavern.
So I guess the question would be, is the, is the management company going to police the parking for the tavern?
Yes, and that's, or the people who are there in the tavern will police. That's why we talked about the stickers. I think last time, we asked about a distinction, to have the, the residents actually display the stickers. That's good, that's right. That's the other reason why we didn't want to have the two bedrooms, to be able to lock in the, the parking number.
Is the tavern parking and the resident parking going to be designated?
They'll be, what did we do last time on the designation of the spaces?
Right now, it's left open.
Right. We didn't show that, we were anticipating that the residents would be told to park, you know, around the corners, et cetera, closer to their units, instead of up in front of the tavern. As a practice, usually people want to be as close to the door as possible. And then we're anticipating that, there's 33 in usage, that can be, you know, what's going to happen is you're going to have residents who are there, and if they can't park, they're going to be told, you know, talk to the manager, and the stickers will be important then. Then once the tavern closes, if there's some flow in, you know, we anticipate that people be able to pull in there.
So should we do a condition that the 33 spaces for the tavern shall be marked as such?
I guess I'm just wondering if there's 40 people parking in there for the tavern, and then people are trying to get home.
Right.
What do they do? And then how does anyone policing it know who's who?
They don't have stickers, if they are not residents. If they're there for the tavern, they wouldn't.
Who's enforcing it?
Right?
Right, so what you.
If they park in the back, you're not going to know they're.
Yeah, I apologize. Josh was just saying it would be easier if we designated the residential.
Right.
Because then at night, after the tavern shuts down, people will feel, you know, comfortable pulling in, and won't just say tavern only.
Right, you need a way to enforce it, right?
Shouldn't those be empty at night, when the tavern's closed? Shouldn't the 33 spaces be empty?
They should be, but the question was, what if 40 came in instead of 33?
Right, so that's too many tavern people, not too many residential people.
That number itself, the residential number is just easier to control in and of itself, regardless of timing. So that's easier to control than the number of people of the tavern.
But don't you have to, how are you going to decide? But aren't, isn't it more to do, to designate 93 spaces as residential than 33 as the tavern? How are you going to designate them?
Per the people actually in the units, I assume that we'd be able to control it that way.
No, like when you pull into the, when I pull in there, how am I going to know that I'm parking in a residential parking spot?
I think that would be designated, but per our discussion in the last meeting, we kind of went into it, is that right now, the residential side has some extra parking, and we were kind of going back and forth between whether that does go to the tavern, whether that's guest parking, that was the part that we kind of left open. And I believe the discussion was kind of, we can figure out those differences in the actual numbers.
That's what we're trying to do now.
Yeah, but, but we had talked about leaving that up to kind of how it actually is managed, and I know it's difficult to make a decision based on that, but the way that the numbers are put on the plan, it leaves the control on the residential side. So if all of those units don't end up needing those parking spaces, I'd say it's easier to take away those from residential than if we designated now as tavern.
So if the residents had a pass to tap a gate to get into their residential parking and separate it from the tavern, we solve all your problems. But that's an added expense. I know it's on the proposal, but.
Yep, nope.
Yeah, small.
I'm just.
Yeah, small, small site, really kind of urbanize your downtown, and.
No, I understand, I'm not trying to add to the project, I'm just saying it's, parking's always turns it off.
Yeah, so we were looking at stickers, you know, there obviously going to be the tenants, there's going to be manager in the tavern, and we do meet all the numbers, right? So it's presumably we're, we'd be okay. If he's got to police it later, usually the owners do that.
So they'll be calling the management company if they don't have a parking spot?
Yeah, and.
So you don't meet the numbers, because you're looking for a parking waiver?
We were before, we haven't gotten to the waivers yet. I think that we, we have everything now, correct, Josh?
We are from the two.
Say again, please. From two down to the 1.4?
1.4 is what.
Going to the 1.4.
So you do need a waiver?
Yes.
Yeah.
So if you designated everything that's residential, residential, then you could tie it to a sticker.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So anyone in there without a sticker, unless, unless you do a visiting, you could tell or you know it's wrong.
Right. Right. And the condition requires that they have visitor stick, visitor placards or stickers also.
Does that make sense in there? Designate the residential, then you can tie, right, then if I have a sticker, I can park there, right? If they don't have a sticker.
It's likely that the residential visitor area will be closest to the tavern.
Sure.
So it functions like a flex space.
Right.
And the residential is probably overparked at 1.4, with one-bedroom units.
So how many visitor spaces are you going to do?
How many you want to do for the visitor spaces?
Six. Say six is probably more reasonable.
Is, is there any, any discussion about valley parking for the tavern, and, about budding real estate? We also.
No, I, no, as far as people, like what's not used at night, some of the budding parking lot, I don't know.
We haven't discussed it with people yet, but that will be.
That could relieve the.
For example, the bank, we've got.
Yeah.
Where are you going to put the, the visitor parking?
Long front? Do I put up a board?
It's generally be up front.
Do you want to put it in front of building A on the Matake sit side of that parking lot? Or building C, I'm sorry?
Yeah.
They're there. We designate all the taverns. They have the other things.
All right, can you show me, so I can write it, so I can do a condition?
Yeah, the first.
Yeah, let's see, on left.
Which ones?
That's what I said. I think that's right, right here.
At the front, yeah.
How many are you going to do?
Six.
One, two, three, four, five, six, those six right there.
Uh, these six here.
Oh, over here. Oh, that's not what I was saying. One, two, three, four, five, six, right there. Okay, so that is, that is the.
These right here.
That's the southwesterly.
Yep, corner.
Southwesterly corner. Okay, so six parking spaces. Southwesterly area for visitor, and those will be marked visitor?
Yes.
Deborah, are you good with that? You think that's okay? Okay. And then, and then, so that's, what's 93 minus six? That would be 87?
Yeah.
Eighty, eighty-seven. So the remaining 87 spaces will be used, will be intended for residential use?
Plus.
Okay, 87 intended. Okay, for residential use. And then, is it safe to say that the 33 spots for the tavern, are those in front of the tavern?
Yes. Yes. They're in their front.
What about the ones right behind the tavern? Would those also count as the 33?
I was going to say, so these, we were going to go for employee, safe parking.
Oh, that's right, you did show that.
One, two, three, four, five? Or less, how many do we have there?
I would say at least five there for the employee, and then the rest coming up from up front.
That was a comment by Merrill, the employee parking. Didn't you guys do that?
That was for, I believe that was just pertaining to the signage, as far as we didn't actually, we had talked about it, but we didn't actually designate it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Thirty, 23, 37?
11, 12, I'm going to get you to 30. How many do we need? 27, 33?
Yep, 33.
So I'm going to split some more here.
Yep.
So. 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33. So up to the handicap on the side.
Okay, and then across?
And then, yeah, straight across to it, so it's, it's a little offset, but maybe that one right there.
Okay, got it. So that would be the, that would be, we can say the 33 spaces in front of the tavern and into the area in front of building C, and then the five spaces in the back. Okay. And that would be designated tavern. Okay.
Is it 33 plus the five, or it's 28?
Five or included.
Yeah, so it's 28 out front, and then the five in the back.
Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that would be the, that would be, we can say the thirty-three spaces in front of the tavern and into the area in front of building C, and then the five spaces in the back. Okay. And that would be designated tavern, okay.
Is it thirty-three plus the five? Or it's twenty-eight?
Five are included.
Yeah, so it's twenty-eight out front and then the five in the back?
Got it, yeah. Okay. Okay, and then I think that after we go through, after the condition states where they all are, we're going to require that the property management and tavern management are, are responsible for policing the- Okay. Okay. And then, so now we're on to the waivers.
Oh, one second. When they, when you designate the parking, is it something like written in the driveway itself? Is it like a sign or?
We're sticking to, we're going to regulate through stickers on it. Is this the actual regulator policing it, right?
But as far as identification of, are we going to have a sign that says residence parking with an arrow?
I would say some kind of, I don't know what, for control on this.
What do you prefer? Or do you want to have painted on the space?
Easiest to paint it on the space?
Yeah. We'd recommend, yeah, why don't we paint the ones where they're kind of half, you know, the way they're proximate? It'll be less, you know, less visual junk.
Yeah, that's what I was-
Keep it clean, right?
Are we okay with just the residential ones? Like, if they put like a number on those, or just something like that?
I think, for me, it makes sense, because then you can tie it to a sticker. And if someone's in that space without a sticker, you know.
Great.
The first couple days, we'll start telling people right away. Teach everyone a lesson. Okay, that sounds fine.
I'm sure everyone will remember what their unit number is.
Yeah, numbers are effective, I'll say. It scares people off if you're parking in a spot.
Well, as a senior, I don't know.
Okay, so, um- Yeah, I am, I have that down, and I'll, I'll turn that all into one condition.
Thank you.
For the waivers, we have to decide what we want to do, because we can go through the waivers and vote on them, because we're going to vote on each waiver, or the, the font is killing me, and I, I went through it and I changed, it's just, drives me crazy. Anyway, I will fix it for the final one, I swear. But, starting on page twenty-one, when we have these waivers, but we don't have any explanation from the applicant.
Super quick on, on twenty, the font, the weird font. It says two multifamily buildings, that should be the three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It's like eight, eight-point font. You see, it's, I think you put it in the yellow.
Oh, sixty-sixty, next. Oh, okay. Three multifamily buildings. Okay. So, so I guess, Jeff, how do you want to do this? Do you want to?
So I can run, run these right down if you want. So on the first one, which is the C one, if, the way that I can do it is, it only has to do with, you know, going to the planning board. We have the submission earlier of what the style is going to be, and it's going to be the New England farmhouse vernacular, the language all matches up. So it's not like we're getting the waiver from, you know, the design criteria, but it's, it's to get the waiver so that we don't have to go into the planning board to get them to agree that it's New England vernacular, the architecture, et cetera. And it's the same that follows down when we go further to C three. We've given you folks, it's all clapboard siding, granite veneer, white vinyl trim, cedar shake siding, traditional vinyl clad double hung windows. So we, that was from long, long ago. So we're going to comply with all of that. We just want you folks to issue the waiver based on the plans that were submitted, so that we don't arguably have to go back to the planning board and get them to specifically approve that. That was also the same on the C two, but it's the signs, as opposed to going into the planning board, we'd rather be in a position, I think it says earlier, that on the signs, we have to go into the building department for those.
So, so hold on a second. So C one, C two, and C three are all because you don't want to go to the planning board?
Correct.
How about D four? D four says no paved area other than access-
That's not, that is not necessary anymore.
So we're getting rid of that?
Yes, so we can eliminate that.
D five?
D five is to allow paved areas within seven point two feet of the westerly side lot line.
Within how many feet, seven point two?
Yep, seven point two feet of the westerly side lot line. Just look, tell me when you're ready for the next.
Okay, yeah.
And two point seven feet of the easterly side lot line. And that's D five.
Okay, so then D six, do we need?
Yep, to allow paved areas within nine point eight feet of the rear lot line.
Okay.
And the rest are signs on the zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
So then if we go to the general bylaws, waiver of the application, the bylaw for earth materials, okay. So we're, we're expecting an import, and this would have to do with the export, from what I understand. We're looking for a waiver to the extent that we start to dig and we find unsuitable materials, whether it's, you know, something very organic. We would, we would want to be in a position that if it hits the, you know, the yardage, that we'd be able to pull it out without having to go into the selectment. We think that's not necessarily likely, but if it happens, it would be good to have that waiver in advance. The, give me one second. Oh, the next one, which is Article thirty-one A, is the demo delay bylaw. And it just says, "To demolish existing funeral home building constructed in eighteen seventy."
Okay.
And then the next, which is thirty-five, it's the local storm management bylaw. It's a public works issued bylaw, and your peer reviewers been through it, approved it. We believe that if, that could be issued, just waiver of the local submission.
So why don't we say that the, we could say that the project to be constructed in accordance with the approved plans?
Absolutely.
Okay.
It'll be the same for the next line, which is the Title V. Must be a, your local supplemental.
Okay.
Yep.
Yes, we did. They have asked us to get these waivers prior to resubmitting out to the peer review.
Okay. So what are you going to do about signs? You don't have, you don't have plans for signs?
Correct.
So they can't issue waivers unless they have plans?
Well, it's a standard size for apartment.
Yeah. They can, you're, I guess your options right now are you either comply with the sign bylaw, or you come back for a minor modification?
I like it. Yes, I think that makes sense.
Okay, so we're going to take out all of the waivers?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to do anything extraordinary, and if we do, we have to come back.
Okay, so go on your sheet. I'm going to, I'm deleting V one, C one. I'm deleting V one-
I apologize, was it C one or?
Page twenty-two, right.
Sorry.
Yeah, page twenty-two, on mine, please.
Got you.
Okay, I'm deleting V one, C three?
Yes.
V one, E one?
Yes. E two?
E two and E three?
Correct.
F two and three?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Going back to twenty-four. Waiver for site plan approval.
That I thought was sufficient. I didn't think you needed an explanation on that one.
Excellent, okay, got you.
So I didn't have one.
And then general waiver filing fee requirements.
I'm recommending they deny it. Nice try.
Yeah, top four.
So what I would suggest is that we go through the waivers, and you guys vote on the waivers, and then you can vote on the entire decision, unless you have any, any other questions. And then, I just didn't know if Deborah, if you had anything?
No, I have.
Okay, good, okay. So for, they are looking for the following-
Sorry, can I ask you a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just, you come up.
Yeah, Mark, back there, nineteen, I have cases.
Hey, Mark.
So from what I understand right now, you just put six spaces up front for guest parking, and then you're looking for a waiver to get the asphalt up within seven feet of the property line? My concern was last time, it was just a snow storage.
Yep.
That was my only concern, was the snow storage. Because it showed that they're on our property line last time we were here.
It's got this-
And it all just drops off down into our, because the property is higher on your side than it is on our side, so that was the only concern that we had.
The snow storage plan?
So what we had talked last time, I think, so snow storage is the stash line here?
Yep.
So you are edge of pavement up here?
So we're up front.
Yep.
So I'm just saying, all the parking, you need to go to the back.
Yep.
Ends right about there. That's where the arrow pointed, really, after that point.
Okay, so I guess my one concern is the snow storage up front. Because all this, I mean, we're like five feet lower than what you guys are on the ground. And all that snow storage is just going to melt down onto our property. That was my only concern there.
Yeah, and we definitely, so, but it's the board. The way it's graded, it's meant to meet basically at the property line and bring, convey the water right along it, is the intent of the design. So it's, it's going to grade still right where you can imagine where the property line is.
Okay.
It'll convey the water out to the back towards where the basin is.
So is it going to pitch to, is your property it, or is mine?
It'll pitch, so it's going to basically go the same way intended to in existing.
Well, right now, it's, we're about five feet lower than you are.
Yep, so same direction, is all I'm saying. So this will change.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. So everything that's going to be melting there is going to be melting down onto my property. That was my only concern.
Put down along the property line. So it's still here, as you can see, the grading's not going on. There's, it's going to swale down along that property line.
Okay.
Into the back.
Is, is the landscaping designed to pitch it that way intentionally?
The grading is, it's intended to go to the back.
You see it definitely grading away from this property?
Yeah, so I mean, obviously with the pitch that it is.
Yes.
So it's going to grade there down to the, next inch, it's a nice, imagine all of it.
So C four, C four-
So everything on that westerly side, it, the grades pull everything back in away from?
Sorry.
Yep.
So on plan C four, is that what you're saying? The grain's elevation?
Do you mind if I draw on?
No, no, go for it.
So really, what is, as these kind of meet and create this arrow with the existing contour, all that's doing is creating a swell right along it.
So the snow area here will basically pull it?
Yeah, everything here will convey right along into the back, and really, this, most of this will either bump into the basin or just along it out to the existing depression that's been modeled.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll go through the waivers, and then I guess if, if anybody has any questions on the waivers or anything, you can stop me, and if not, we can vote on them all in one effort. Okay, so for the maximum height, the required is thirty-six feet, they're above thirty-six feet. And then maximum stories, it's the, in both zoning, in the center protection and the residential A, it's two and a half stories, and they're doing three stories. For the maximum gross floor area, it says that the building floor area shall not exceed fifteen percent or nine thousand square feet, whichever is lesser of the total site area, except by a special permit. In residential A, there's no requirement, but they have, they're up to forty-seven percent or sixty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-three square feet. For maximum dwellings under, in residential A, they're only allowed one. Here, we have sixty-six dwelling units, or three buildings, but for parking spaces, there's two parking spaces per dwelling unit for multifamily, and one parking space for every four seats for the tavern. And they have ninety-three spaces, which is one point four spaces per dwelling unit, and they have thirty-three spaces for the tavern. How many seats are at the tavern?
One hundred and thirty-two.
One thirty-two?
One thirty-two.
They calculate it as one thirty-two.
Thirty-two divided four, four is thirty-three. Oh, so it, it, so that, that one actually works, but so it's the residential that they need the waiver from. No multifamily dwelling units are allowed in the CP district or the RA, and they have three multifamily buildings, sixty-six units. And then Section seven, which is, Section seven is the center protection, is that what it's called? Yes, center protection district. All buildings or structures within public view have to be a certain American Colonial, Greek Revival, Federalist, or Traditional New England architecture designed, and that has to be approved by the planning board. They're requesting a waiver that, obviously, that the planning board doesn't have to make a determination, because this is a comprehensive permit. You guys make that determination. So they're asking for the waiver from the planning board determination. The same is in seven C two, which is the planning board approval is required for all signs constructed, erected, or altered in signs to conform to the provisions of the bylaws. They're asking for the planning, a waiver from that planning board determination, because this is a forty B. For C three, the exterior finish of all buildings have to be brick, glass, or wood, wood simulated, or suitable substitute material approved by the planning board. And the planning board has to approve the exterior color. And they're seeking a waiver from that planning board approval. Skipping over to D five, no paved area other than accessways and sidewalks shall be built within ten feet of the side lot line, and they're looking for seven point two feet at the westerly side lot line and two point seven feet at the easterly side lot line. In D six, no paved area other than accessways and sidewalks shall be built within ten feet of the rear lot line, and they are going to be nine point eight feet from the rear lot line. And then we get to skip all of those sign ones. We're down to the Pembroke general bylaw. They're looking for a bylaw for earth removal in case, to the extent that unsuitable materials are found on site that need to be trucked offsite. For the demolition delay bylaw, it's a waiver for seven Maticusit where they are demolishing the existing funeral home, which was constructed in eighteen seventy. The stormwater management bylaw, they are requesting a waiver so that, for the project to be constructed in accordance with approved plans. For the Title V, rules and regulations, they are requesting a waiver from the local rules and regulations for the project to be constructed in accordance with the approved plans. They're looking for a waiver from site plan approval, and those waivers, I recommend granting. And then the gen, they're looking for a general waiver for filing fee requirements, which I'm recommending that that waiver be denied. So I would have a, I would ask for a motion that the general waiver be denied. Start with that.
Make a motion that the general waiver be denied. Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then a waiver that the remaining waivers be approved.
Make a motion to wow and approve the remaining waivers. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then you need to make a motion to approve the draft decision with the, with revisions from tonight, to approve the project with conditions.
All right, make a motion to approve the draft decision with the revisions we discussed tonight and the conditions. Got a second?
John, one second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
That's it. We're done.
Great, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks, guys.
So I will make the changes, and then you just need to sign them.
Yeah.
Sign the decision. See you. See you. Oh, do we need to make, make a motion to close the public hearing? Yeah, I mean, we voted it.
Yeah.
We can assume it was closed.
Right.
Okay.
You're done, right? Yeah. No, we have one more, yeah.
Am I off it?
I should don't know who this.
Was that Four School Street or those, or that's the other one?
This is School Street.
Is it?
Yeah. You want School Street?
I go, I was at one point, yeah.
Yeah.
You're welcome. I'm done with you guys. I don't, my, no more litigation and no more forty Bs, so behave.
Try. No promises.
Try, no promises. Find something for me, okay.
Thanks again, Amy.
All right, I will see you guys the next, the next time.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, yeah, thank you. Sue, I'll get you, um, the notice. I'll get you that notice.
Mr. Quell, we'll have you up in a second. We're just waiting for John Susan Mend.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, uh, just open the continued hearing, case eleven dash twenty-three, variance on the outcome. Diego Colallo, Four School Street. All right, so we had you in on the initial hearing.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to get some info from the building department. We got the letter from Mr. Delbre. George, you're here. Were you here for this? No, 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 you hear about this?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, could you just give us a little background on that? You know, what we're going on over there and what you guys.
Well, I talked to Diego way back at the beginning. He asked to put two rows high and still be under fourteen. And he did that and then tried to improve it to the eight feet. And we objected to that, so he brought it back down to where it is now, which is about, probably about five feet. So, the maximum retaining wall he could have is four feet, so he needs some relief on that.
Okay.
And either way, it's either a structure or it's required, requires a front building.
Over four feet?
Over four.
Yeah.
Requires a building.
Yes.
Or if it's four feet with a surcharge on it, which, you know, like.
Yeah.
Not, not the ground or something, then we still need, uh, structural.
Joints.
So if you keep it the way it is, we still need a structural flooring or stamp or something, say it's okay to hold that much dirt. Okay. Or you could lower it to four feet.
And now we got four feet and I got the, the cap on the top. It's only like eight inches.
Okay, that's. It's five foot, yeah. So it's a little above where it needs to be. Well, so you could get, you could apply for a permit, but then it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Apply for a permit, then we're gonna want a structural stand, which is probably relatively easy.
Okay.
And then he still needs, either way, he needs approval from you guys, 'cause it's, if it's four feet or more, then it's, the building grid requires true dirt.
So I'm asking you, George, if it's under four feet, you wouldn't need variance relief?
You, well, you'd need to adhere into the structure.
Right, so you're saying.
It does need a building.
Right, so if that's one feet, one foot tall, I'd need a variance.
And it's holding dirt. I don't know if the, if the, if the backfiller is required for the septic system that was put in there. I don't know that, that particular detail, but regardless, because before there was just a wooden fence and the dirt was up against that and coming out on the sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Needs to do something, so. It's gotta pick your poison. It looks pretty good the way it is, just needs, would need a stamp from the engineer and your approval. And then if you put the fence on top, which I see here, nice, nice looking drawings and everything, but that's just a, whether you allow it or not, it seems like if you push it back, keep the stone wall where it is and then put the six-foot fence.
Behind it, behind it.
Push it back. Well, whatever you, whatever you prefer, but that's, that's where the catch comes. That we need to give him some sort of approval or denial or something.
Okay.
That makes sense?
Yeah, so, from a, from, in your opinion, from the, from the zoning side, what he has there, even if he will it at two feet or more, he needs zoning really from.
Because it's technically a structure because it, definitely the structure on our bylaws is, you may or may assemble some goods and so forth. And there was nothing there before, so it's not like, um, a pre-existing thing.
Okay. I mean, we don't get a lot of retaining walls before us. I said, we don't, I don't usually get a lot of retaining walls.
No.
I mean, do they, do they block the town like they're?
Yeah.
The property lines or do they just don't?
It's the, the third one we're dealing with in the last six, six months to a year. Yeah, it's peculiar, yeah.
Um, okay, so either way, he needs the relief.
Yeah.
And that what he needs to get a building.
Yeah, and he, I think he needs to have the wall to, to, you know, make his lot nice and look nice the way he's.
Yeah.
The only thing now, I, to be honest, I don't have any privacy, because they can see whatever they want inside of, at the yard, you know? That's the only thing I, I'm trying to make something nice and get some privacy, nothing else, you know?
Right.
Because the wood, wood fence that was before was a little bit higher.
Would you be willing to take this fence that you got in this picture and push it?
Yeah, yeah, put it on the back of the, those concrete blockers.
Enough to get whatever, whatever decides, so you get a lawnmower, maybe some shrubs out there or something.
Yeah, I can do whatever you guys want.
Because you could connect to the front, yeah, you could get it so you could maintain it easily.
Can I, can I express some of my concerns?
Yep.
So, Mike McNamee, I live next door. I, I own the property next door.
Hey, Mike, you can just come up to us.
So, right now where it's built up, he has the, uh, level of the, uh, soil so high that it actually is maybe two feet up on the fence on the property line. And every time it rains, it all washes out into my driveway.
You're talking more on your, the, his rear property line, your side?
My side property line, my sixty-four maticicet.
So facing the house, you're to the right?
On my maticicet.
Okay, so you're facing, facing the house.
His back property.
The back property.
Every time it rains, it washes out and it comes down into our driveway. Because he's got the loom built up so high on the side fence.
Was it doing that before the retaining wall?
No, it was a loom that before. It was a gradual slope that was way down.
Okay.
Now he is brought up by feet of loom.
Can, can that be addressed somewhere?
I can put a concrete on his side too, concrete blockers on his side, so inside of my yard, not on his.
Yeah, no, if he could address the washout, would that be?
Yeah, because I still got some, uh, concrete blocks left. So I can put inside of my property, so that way it doesn't go anything on his side.
I prefer not to see a four-foot concrete wall.
Okay.
But, but being inside of my property.
Um, do you, do you, any preference or thoughts how we?
Uh, well, right now, he's, he's completely built up to grade so high that everything is now pushing out onto my property.
There's nothing holding it now, it's just a.
But wooden fence, it's gonna be coming down probably pretty soon.
It's getting around the fence.
It's, it's leaking right down to the corner, because you go, you're already the telephone pole.
Because I think if I put like a concrete wall inside of my property, I'm gonna hold that, you know? That way it doesn't go anything on his property.
Right, but, and to you, you need another variance for that, right?
Or maybe all part of this one.
Right, because I don't have any plan. So, I mean, my issue is, you know, you're, I don't, I don't, I'm looking at these. You know, you put it up and then you come in and ask them, whereas he didn't come into us first with a plan and then we could've went over it and, and worked it out. So I don't, I feel bad that you had did something there without approval, but we can't look at it and say, well, we felt bad that you put it in and now we're gonna consider that. I mean, for me, I'm looking at this as if it's not there, um, personally. Because otherwise, people would do that all the time. They'd put stuff up and come in and ask for, you know, forgiveness later, so. Uh, I mean, if there's a standard for a variance, if you, you can explain why you think you would meet that requirement for a variance. Um, you know, it's the shape, topography, soil condition, there's a hardship as well. Um, you know, the variant, you're not really entitled to a variance. You have to really, you have to try to meet that standard. Is there something about the property where you would?
No.
If it doesn't work without having that?
Much. Like, like I said, I was trying to do something nice and get some privacy. To be honest, because I got, I'm not saying it's him, but I have some neighborhood. They think they are the owner of my property. Because me and George, when I bought the house, George said, oh, if you put a fence around the whole house, you don't have to put a fence around the pool. And he asked me to put some alarms on each door that you can go next to the pool. And I did that and after that, some of the neighborhoods, it starts sending some message to him saying, oh, he gotta put a fence around the, the pool. But he told me, if I put a fence around the whole house, I don't have to put a fence around the pool too, so.
Um, I mean.
The, the only thing I, I wanted, make it nice and get some privacy, that's it, nothing else.
So, it sounds to me a couple of conditions. One is structural elevation, whether it needs an engineering approval and a neighbor that we need to kind of address his concerns. Yeah, no, I just, I, I just, yeah, I mean, reading the bylaw, I just don't see how he's meeting the standard for variance. Because he's looking for, I mean, we're talking a few feet of septic. How many? He's right on, he's pretty much on the property line, right?
I am over a little.
Right, so it's talking.
Side of my property.
Talking the majority of the, of the septic. You have anything?
The septic system back there?
It's not too close? It's not too.
So, I mean, I'm, I haven't, I haven't heard anything, I haven't seen anything submitted that's, you know, getting you over this threshold of what you need for a variance. So, I mean, I, for the last hearing, I, I said that the ICP should come in with some reasoning. Uh, you know, something we can hang our hat on.
What about if I move those concrete blocks and just put a white vinyl fence?
I, I think with a fence, and I can defer to George, I don't think you need a variance for a fence, a six-foot fence.
Six, six feet up, up to the property line.
Right.
So it's a, some of the trade-off, I mean, he's got a nice, the wall's kinda nice. He has it serving a purpose to hold the dirt.
On that side, yeah.
Yeah, the back side, not, not as smooth of that as it should be.
Yep. Have any else, John?
Well, they put topography and they want the lot sloped off. He's just trying to fix the lot.
Without anything being there, the wash is gonna, the property's gonna continue to wash into the sidewalk and.
It was an ongoing problem.
Yeah.
Years ago and I called a few times and they cleaned it up. He's been very cooperative.
Yeah, the sidewalk's always been a washout.
Ceased the dislauta, I think it was a communication problem, so. So that's what I led to this, was trying to fix that problem.
Right. How do we address Mr. McNamee's?
Well, that's, that's my, my concern is that the property, I mean, the wall is not my deal. That's up to you guys and the town and everybody else. Um, it, that has nothing to do with me whatsoever. My only concern is that the loom right now is so high that it's on the fence between the two properties. It's up about eighteen inches. So, if the fence, if they eventually push the fence over or whatever, then that's all gonna wash out onto my property. Or every time it rains now, it washes down out into the driveway and underneath the block in that corner.
There's no block.
If you want, I think, I don't mind to remove those eighteen inches of the, that, that you said, no, I don't mind. I can take that off on your side.
My, my, my issue is the, the grade of, like you said, everything is just washing down onto that, that's, you know, the wall is, you're at the high end. It's, had nothing to do with me or zoning or permittinging whatsoever. My, my, my only concern is all that, yeah, it's just, it's, it's just up to, I, it'll wash it down to me.
And what, if you use those, those cement blocks, is that okay with you to fix that problem?
Well, would someone have a four-foot block wall on the property line now?
I'm hearing eighteen inches. What if you did one block, which is like, what, twenty-four inches? I don't know if, where, it's not, you're not gonna see this big thing, but something, a lot, I'm just, I don't know.
Or if he held it enough and he put his fence in front of it, so you see his fence and his walls immediately behind the fence if he moved in or not.
But my, my concern is not the wall. That has nothing to do with me. I mean, it's built right up to the telephone pole now. Four, three quarters of the pole. My concern is it just stops and then, I mean, you got loom here and then my property goes like this. Do I wanna see a concrete wall along my property?
That's a problem, I just don't have a picture.
I don't know how you retain that soil, and that's, that's my concern.
And I didn't take a good look at your side, so that's, so I'm a little bit off here, so, but if you, if you put the, the concrete wall in.
Behind the wood fence inside of my property.
And you're looking at a fence. You, you just see the fence, but the fence would be the retaining, retaining wall.
That's, if it's engineered and it's doing what it's supposed to be doing, I mean, that's not my call. That's, that's, that's you guys and zoning and permitting and so on and so forth. My, my concern is the way it is in the existing conditions now.
Mm-hmm.
It just often goes onto my property. And it's just, it needs to be rectified somehow.
Yeah, I, I agree with the, so I can see this one or two ways, one, I'm not in favor of it as it is now. You know, if, and this is up to the board as well, if you wanted to do a plan, you know, talk to Mr. McNamee, show him the plan. Like I think what Mr. Berry was saying, create the retainage so you're not spilling onto his property and then cover it with fence, so all, Mr. McNamee has to seem there's a nice final fence. You know, if you wanna put something together, you know, give you a, my thought is, I'll give you one more short continuance if you wanted to do that. Um, and talk to Mr. McNamee, Mr. Berry, and then, you know, present that, you know, one more time. Because I'm inclined to deny it based on what I have in front of me. And I think just following the bylaws, you just have to present it. But if you wanna try that, we would need an extension. So you'd have to agree to extend our decision deadline, which I don't think you would mind. Um, if the board is inclined to that. Is that something you'd be interested in trying to do? Um, but I'm just saying, I think you gotta come back with something.
True.
Because I'm inclined to not allow myself and you need a solid to say yes.
Yes.
Um, so I think if you draw something up, you may have to get an engineer, someone to do some planning. Shout to Mr. McNamee, you know, and then maybe Mr. Berry too, just to get his take. You know, I'd be more inclined to consider it than what you got in front of me now. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna say no, because I don't think you need the standard. So, that's something you wanna try?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so.
So you guys think I can remove the, let's see if I remove the concrete block that it is now. I bring like, uh, maybe three foot inside of my yard? Can I put the vinyl fence on the front of there?
You can put a vinyl fence, uh, six feet or less.
Yeah.
On your property. I mean, you don't need to come in for me, I don't think you need to come for George. But if you're building, if you're, even if you're moving that retainage, it's still a structure, per George and the building department, you'd still need a variance.
Oh, I, I don't know. I, oh, I can remove the concrete and just put the white fence, that's it?
If you remove the concrete and just put a white fence, you don't even, you wouldn't need relief here.
Okay.
If you wanted to try to keep the concrete.
Yeah, just trying to keep to, to help to hold. Yeah, just trying to keep to, to help to hold that, you know?
No, I, and that's why I'm, I, I think, you know, George echoed this, it's, it's doing a good thing on Maticuset Street. It's just doing a bad thing the way it's set up now on Mr. McNamara's property. So what I'm saying, if you can try to alleviate that, what's happening to Mr. McNamara's property. Um, and come in with a plan that shows us what you're going to do, we can look at it and then, you know, and if you want to fence off, or you want to move that and fence it, that's up to you.
Yeah. Like I said, the only thing I'm trying to do, make something nice and get some privacy, nothing else. Because the way it is now is, is too low. Everybody can see you, you know?
No, I, I, I get your concern.
Everything inside of the yard.
So do you want to try that?
Sure.
Okay, and if you change your mind and say, I don't want to do that, I'm just going to put a fence up and get rid of it, then.
Okay.
You don't, you can just let us know.
Okay.
Are you guys inclined to?
Having like a visual, like a map would be great, just to get a sense of that.
Sure.
Right. So he's going to work a little with George, work with his neighbor and come back, sort of, here? With a plan and, and then again, I would, I would tell you to, you know, look at the bylaw and what a variance is and, and articulate that to us. If you guys are okay with that. Yeah? No, I am definitely. Yeah, no, definitely. Uh, when do we?
March eighteenth, September twenty.
I'll let you know tomorrow. Actually, I'll learn it. Um, I, yeah, I just, the best thing is to work with the building. Uh, the end of the, twenty-ninth of March?
No, either March eighteenth or April twenty-ninth.
That should be good for March eighteenth. Well, let me, Susan, I'm going to shine anything you need. Yeah.
Well.
March eighteenth is, you know, it's twenty. It's Monday.
It's only two weeks?
Three weeks.
Three weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I get another, maybe another forty-five days?
Or we could do the. So April.
April twenty-nine?
April?
Yeah.
April what?
Twenty-nine?
Yes.
It's the last, last Monday of the month.
That's two, two months' time to do that.
Yeah, perfect.
And so again, the other piece, you, you, um.
On his side, I'll try to fix the fence that I can.
So what I would say is talk to Mr. McNamara.
Yeah, sure.
And then it's, anytime you come in and these, it always helps to have a neighbor on your side. And you could probably get a long way of just being neighborly anyways. And Susan, what do we need for time on the decision?
I'll have to look into that to see if, if he needs to fill out his extension request.
He can, yeah, he can tell, we can have him, he can say it on the record for us.
Okay.
And then he can communicate with Susan. So why don't we say two weeks after the, the hearing?
Okay.
So that would be what, April? I just want to put it down. Twenty-nine to coming back, is what we're saying?
Twenty-nine.
Yeah, so we'll have until, would you be real, we'll have until May thirteenth to issue a decision? Yeah. That'll do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so he's agreeing, we'll extend the deadline.